You ready? Let's do this. Put the delusions to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I guess we'll approve immediately.
I move to approve the minutes.
I say it.
All in favor? How about the minutes?
I'll move to approve the minutes.
I say it.
I'm sorry.
No, see. Did you do all in the favor?
I bet. All in favor?
We didn't try to agree on that.
Yes, where we're at, that's the L O U for the law enforcement stuff. We had met before last month, maybe if you remember, and they asked for a couple of small changes. Maybe those got them back. We've been again anyway. I've got just a couple more to do. I'm here the last couple of weeks. Our schedules just happened to jive. So move out over the next month as well. Then we should have that part of the event by then. And it won't have any drastic changes for what you guys have. It's just the one-year warranty. The last one was under the previous sheriff. Well, kind of it. And we got that one.
Right away permits.
So you asked me to canvass around a little bit, kind of see what was out there from the Gills request for the manhole covers and things. So look, so Aberdeen and Firth, you know, don't have anything. They don't have really any ordinances in place. Blackfoot and Idaho Falls, they grab those. They require it to your public works director, you know, specifications. And then they both have the one-year warranty. But that's really about it. They had the ordinance. So the two questions I have for you guys, obviously, anytime you pass an ordinance that requires a permit, Robyn's going to be there to issue permits. So you want to be kind of careful on how much more work you create, you know, from that side of things. And then second, whether you want Brian to be kind of in control of that or whether you want to get, you know, completely into the specifications. So I need a little bit of direction from you guys on just how detailed do you want to get on that?
This is, this is.
The trenching, yeah, the trenching and your right ways.
Okay.
But yeah, whether you want to have a lot of details, like Gil's example, you obviously have a lot of detail in it. We're concerned to do that. But the first stage is obviously, do you want to issue a permit? Like I said, first in Aberdeen, do not. They don't have any system set up for that at all. Blackfoot and Idaho Falls obviously do. But the main part of theirs is the one-year warranty, you know, for any settling and stuff that goes. But any inspections or anything like that, obviously, that's down on Brian's shoulders. Any permits you're going to issue, that's on Robyn's shoulders. So need a little direction on how you want to do that. Do you want to require a permit? Whether you want to be specific in it? So I mean, that's kind of where the other cities are. So with that, I guess just.
Do, how many cities about our side?
Most of the cities your side, like Aberdeen and Firth, don't have anything in their ordinances or anything.
And do they, do they require permits?
No, they don't require anything yet. Like for Aberdeen and Firth, Blackfoot and Idaho Falls do. But then they just have their specification on hand with the public first guy to be, you know, at your direction. But then they, both of those do have the one-year warranty. Like I say, Aberdeen and Firth, not there.
And to issue a permit, like, what if I leave the file, the document filed somewhere?
With you. Yeah, so I mean, you, so they would have to come to you, get a permit, say, hey, we're going to do this. Because then you would calendar that somehow to tell Brian, hey, go check and see what they're doing. You know, so like I say, every time you pass an ordinance, you know, or pass a requirement like that, puts work on you guys too.
That's if you want to require a permit.
Right.
If you, all you want to do is have it, have it out there, say, hey, this is what you need to do with that one year.
And you get that.
Then you can come back on it if it fails.
So I mean, honestly, the simplest probably is to, you know, at Brian's direction, I think, get it there. But you want the one-year warranty. But you may not want the permit. Don't let us worry about all that, I just owe you.
Okay. I guess that's what we need to figure out.
What would you recommend?
I guess my question too is, and I kind of asked this before, you can't hold the company liable without it?
Well, so I mean, if they come in and damage your roads, it's, you, you potentially can. But it's obviously a lot easier if people say, hey, no, here's our ordinance. You know, these are our laws. Otherwise, you just kind of out there. I would definitely think you would want the one-year warranty. You know, and something that says the road has to be built back to substantially the same condition.
But not necessarily a permit.
Right. Well, again, that's up to you guys. But, you know.
Yeah.
But if you have a substantially same condition on a one-year warranty, that may solve your problem. And if it doesn't, then you can always advantage yourself a bit later.
So do you think it would be better to just go with the permit to begin with or just the one-year warranty?
Well, it's kind of up to you guys for Robyn's workload. You know, because if you're going to require a permit, then you got to be here to issue permits. Which I think the two days a week could be fine. I mean, isn't that your hours now?
Yeah, and sometimes I am here more. And I did change the number to cellphone, so I am available.
It's just another task that Robyn has to deal with. I don't know how often that happens here on you or if it's, you know, is that what?
It doesn't happen that often.
Are you talking five or six a year? Or are you talking plenty a year? I don't know. Was that?
I'd bet you though.
I would think so.
Yeah.
Just like Gil's house. You'll watch them close.
But, you know, you've, you've never had one. So I don't know how big of a problem it would be to have it.
I think if they were to come and do some, some work somewhere and there's a problem like this.
So, I mean, so that's up to you guys. Like I said, just don't have a big of a problem if you have it with it.
I've never heard anything like that in my life. But I have heard things like that.
Okay. Leave it for now?
I think, I think leave it for now. I, I'm guessing if somebody else does something and it has a problem and, and they don't come out and fix it or do something like that. So it's not always a problem. I think that's probably, because it doesn't happen very often.
It might be just, just as insurance, just say, hey, put it on the books, no permit. Anyone they do, they have to have, give it, make sure they go one-year warranty and.
Yeah.
And you don't think they have to do anything else with it until someone fails to, to, to do the work properly. And there's no, then there's no work on Robyn. That's just, you know, until, till there's a failure. But then you have something to, and you have insurance there when that, and the ordinance saying, hey, this is how it has to be. Okay. Free insurance.
And that's where I guess I go. Would they come back and look at our road like a little bit again? Something like that?
Well, that's, I mean.
I think, I think.
Well, it would have to be, state something that it would be equivalent.
Or better. Yeah, sometimes it's a more, better, you know, something like that.
I think as you're just kind of doing your thing and you notice people, maybe doing something, you can just kind of keep an eye on it and request as they do that. Say, hey, make sure you.
What does your council say?
Yeah.
I like the year, the one-year thing. Because at least then we have something in writing, right Garrett? That we can fall back on. And say, because if we hire, if somebody accidentally hides a irrecusable and they're going to be like, well, tough. At least then we have something. I don't think we'll need it very often either, because I've never heard it happening. But does it, how much does it hurt to just put on the books?
Well, you know, I, last, last year, I dug up my mom's sewer line and replaced it. And I didn't need a permit. And this was in Idaho Falls. And they just requested that.
They were just.
They come and look at it before we buried it to be sure that it was repaired, you know, to the most part properly for what we did. And so when we got done, they called them to come inspect it real quick and said, fine, great. And we buried it and we were done. So I think something like that is like Brian could go and see just whatever.
But we're talking our roads and not just the yard.
Right. That's fine.
Right?
Yeah, this is the roads. This is right ways. They do whatever they want with the yard. Now, they have to meet funding codes, you know, depending on what they're doing. But as far as you guys are concerned, I don't know if they are ourselves. Who cares?
I don't know what you guys think.
I think it's a good idea that we know where what's going on.
Okay.
I mean, just so we, like, I don't know. Like, you don't want to be like, oh, we didn't know how there's big.
Well, if they cut into the.
Or, or they ruin, you know, I think it's just good to know what's going on in case something does it.
Does that require permit?
Well, I mean, we, back to them, do you want a permit or not? So what I've gathered, I think, is you probably want the substantially similar repair and a one-year warranty, but not a permit for now. Is that what I've gathered?
Well, they've got to come to the city to cut in the remaining. So they need that permission first.
Well, so that would be a permit. You probably want to do a permit then.
Because I don't think they got permission to cut into the road and channels.
No, they didn't.
They just cut into the road.
Right.
Right?
Yeah.
I would, I would do the permit. It's your right way. You don't want to know who's doing the work in your right way.
Yeah.
You want to have the opportunity to tell them like what their requirements are. And you can charge for that.
I think, I think you're right. When they, when they come into the road, when they come into the road, I think that really should require a.
That's what I worry about, is the road part.
Because your roads are your biggest asset in town, followed by your water and your sewer.
Yeah, like if you're putting gas lines out and they're going to cut in them.
And all the utilities are accustomed to doing that. I think any of those, some different contractors are coming in.
I think we should, I think we should do that.
Okay, so yes on the permit.
Yeah. I think let's, let's, let's look into that. Because we do want to fix Brian.
So what I'll do then is a yes on a permit, substantially similar and a one-year warranty.
Yeah.
There's a lot of.
There's no accident.
Because we don't want, we don't want people just cutting the road thinking they can do whatever they want just to do something. I think that's. I didn't realize that.
Because they're required to post their permit somewhere where they're working.
Yeah, so I mean, you, you have that, you would have to have that permit on them when they do it. So then that would be you policing it obviously.
But that's okay. Yeah, that's a good idea.
Do they need to set a price on the permit now? That can be done later as.
Well, I'll add that to the, so the ordinance would just say the fee would be per resolution of council. I don't want to add that to your fee resolution.
And then they can put the road back to the way it was. Okay. That sounds fair.
Wait, let me ask this. You said add that to the resolution. So is there going to be ultimately two things?
Well, so we'll get the permit set up and then, but in the ordinance, we don't want to put the fee in the ordinance because then you have to change the ordinance every time you change the fee. So you'll have your fee resolution that has like a fee sheet that would have. That's just going to be a new one there. So, I mean, you'll, ultimately, we'll have to have a public hearing to increase to be able to add that fee. But that's not a big deal. It's just a new fee. So you got to have that public hearing.
Yeah, I think, I think we'll still have to run that with the one-year warranty.
You know, for now, the fee, the fee can be zero if you want.
Yeah, just long as we know that no one has inspected.
That's kind of why.
Because your permit could be free for now that you don't have to have a public hearing in the resolution.
I think that's okay too, as long as.
And to see how it goes.
Yeah, and then we'll put it on your fee resolution. And then the next time you're changing fees, that could be one of them you should address as well. So you could all go through. And if you're talking five or six a year, who cares? You know, if you're now getting busy, you got a budget, so I'll charge one time buck or something.
Good. Okay, we'll move on. Budget hearing scheduled.
Oh, uh, we just need to schedule our budget hearings, which last year I was in office. I have to have that into the county by April 30th.
By April 30th?
The, I have to have the schedule of it, oh, into the county so they can post it. By April 30th. So August 8th would be our.
Do we normally do it in the office?
We did last year. Beyond that, I don't know.
It seems like August, like kind of somewhere in there that we. We had it. Seems like we used to up the meeting a day because it had to begin the next.
So it has to be in, in September. I don't remember which date for sure. Kind of mid-September. And I do want to do some budget visits before here anyways. So we'll be talking about it. But this would be like the finalized budget.
So do you think August would work best?
Yeah, I think August is good. That's what we did last year.
I, I just don't remember. I can't remember what we did in the house. August seems right, so I'm good with August. Are you?
Isn't it two for August?
Um, yeah. So you got to cover it in like what September, middle of September.
I think it's time to do whatever we do, right?
And I, well, we'll have some budget talks before then.
Perfect. I'm good with August.
What's your, yeah, August, what, 15th is probably your?
August 8th.
8th.
Because the first is the Thursday.
Screws it up once the first is the Thursday.
I hate that. That makes it really hard.
Well, I don't, because I usually have two bad weeks of meetings and then two not so bad. Well, the first falls on Thursday, then I have three bad weeks.
So I think we have to prove that, right?
Uh, yeah, I think most do. Just so it's clear in your minutes, just a motion to schedule that.
I think this, or four. Or August. It's on DM. Can you say it?
I guess off table. Okay. Uh, just a quick thought on the right of these permits. When I was doing that sewer line, uh, when I was talking to the city of Idaho Falls, they said if you're going to go in the street, you have to be insured bonded. So I think we should require that also if they're going to go into the street. So like, like you guys, when you need to replace your sewer line and they have to go into the street, they need to be insured bonded to do that. So that their insurance, their coverage and something will be wrong.
And you have to go through the street. That's if they did.
Right? That's what I'm saying. A company comes in, wants to cut the street and do all that stuff. They have to be insured bonded.
I like that.
So you can't personally do that. You're going to hire somebody to go into the street and have to be insured bonded.
Me too?
Yeah. And that wasn't. So we just repair what needs to be repaired. S L R F funds general, funds and rewards.
Okay, so I'll give you a little backstory. In 2022, City of Baywatch was given some COVID money. It was like eighty-seven thousand. And you have to fill out a report, like how you used it. And I kind of came in, of course, after that was done. And so I kind of thought that, um, at first I thought, well, okay, so it's never been deemed used as something. But I did go home and did some research. And anything a million dollars or less, basically, you can just count it as revenue. So I've taken care of the report. I don't have to report on it anymore. Um, but this sheet that has the water things that need to be fixed, I am proposing because there is general funds available. And I did ask the auditor. She said technically you can use general funds for whatever. But she did recommend that I move them over to water. So, um, I don't know that we can technically approve it in this meeting. I think you probably have to do it in a budget hearing to like shift some.
Well, you can move it now if you need to repair it.
Yeah.
And then you, when you open to shift your budget later, you'll take care of it.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. Okay, so I would like to take some funds from general funds to address some of these higher priority things that need to be fixed. And this list came from Robert from Mountain West. Um, and then we had another person come in from Rural Water, right? Who kind of gave his opinion. He didn't agree totally with all of these. So I'll let Brian talk about that too. So again, the maintenance reports are going to kind of blend together.
So, and that's kind of a, that list is kind of a generalized list. Robert Loftus from Mountain West went through and, and he, he picked about everything in there that should need a little care. And some of what we can do ourselves, uh, it doesn't have to be.
And these prices, he, he did kind of round up.
Right. So I mean, we can't, that's not, that's not an exact quote.
So that you have those in front of you?
Yeah, that's kind of an estimate. So I know one of the, the big things that, that we've been worried about is this, the drives, uh, for the 10 horsepower pump. And the 10 horsepower pump is up and running. Likely reported last month.
And that's the other thing that I wanted to point out. I put in a copy of the electric bill. I didn't give me a copy.
Okay.
And so this is the bill that only for half a month, the 10 horsepower was running. And you can see the difference of last year versus first year. That's seven dollars a day already.
Yeah.
That's crazy.
It's a considerable saving.
It really is.
Because it started in on like the 13th?
Seven dollars a day adds up.
Yeah.
So the downside is, because there's always a downside, is the drive that we put in for that 10 horsepower. When Jeff Cook from I R W A, the Idaho Rural Water, he come in and looked at it, and it is running exactly how the system was designed to run. They're called standalone pumps. The 10 horsepower is supposed to run in the winter. And in the summer, when you need more water, you turn it off and you turn on the 30 horsepower. That's how they were designed. Ideally, like I talked in the last meeting, you would want the 10 horsepower pump to run year-round. And the 30 horsepower pump would, would communicate with the 10 horse and kick on only when it's needed. So.
In the middle of the night.
In the middle of the night when everybody turns their water sprinklers on or, you know, so that kind of thing. Right now, we're not able to do that.
So what's going to take him to talk?
The 30 horse, the, the drive is about gone already. That is one of the things that he listed here.
Okay.
They're also recommending a SCADA upgrade. That's the control. It's a computer control that sits in the other room. Robert from, from the state said, if it's working, if we can, if we can make the drives talk to each other and keep this SCADA unit, that's money savings. It's not wrong. I mean, it's just, it's older than some of the newer ones, you know?
Well, it's calling the difference of this SCADA versus the new.
So this is radio frequencies. So something else that's coming up through the, through governments is the safety of our systems. And here in the next two years or three years, we have to verify that we have a safe system or prove that our system is safe. This is one of the safer systems because it's a radio frequency. You can't hack it online.
You can't hack it and turn it off.
You have to be within a certain distance of these radio frequencies. And then it takes some time to find them.
Okay.
So it's a safe system as far as hacking is concerned. So he says if it's not broke, don't fix it.
Right.
So some of the money, instead of like, some of these isolation valves and some of these pressure sensors, some of those things we don't need to do right now. But we need to put a new drive on the 30 horsepower pump. And we need to be able to make those two pumps talk together with the SCADA.
And how much money is that going to cost?
Well, I need to get Teton Communications in to, to verify that the, the drive that we put on the 10 horse, if you remember from last month, it's a 24 volt system. It doesn't communicate with the 12 volt system that we have. There's some things that they, another little, translator, I think they call it, a little box that can take the 24 volt system and translate into the SCADA. That is not on that list. I don't know how much that's going to cost. A new drive for the 30 horse is pretty close to the 13,000, 13 to 15,000 range. So.
Yeah, it is 13, it is 13,000, right? So that we have to.
Yeah.
Like I say, because we've, since this list come out, Robert or Jeff Cook has come and talked to us and said, well, it's.
It's changed a little.
It's changed a little. Some of the things that they're saying we need to fix, maybe we don't really need to fix. It's a little more manpower, I guess, to run it this old way, but.
Kind of what this Jeff let Brian believe is we don't necessarily need to look at the big water project right now. It feels like we kind of bunch our rates, bring in some more money and just kind of knock these out. Like, there's still the meters that need to be replaced that should have been replaced 10 years ago. I feel like that's a higher priority with some of these. We're going to have to put some money in there.
Some of these that, that, I like the, they say the isolation valves, that's something that I can do on my own in the next year, year or two. They're not actually required in some of those areas. They would just be convenient. So like I said, we can shave some of that down and, and focus on, and I, like I say, I don't know what the answer is on as far as that 24 volt system that's in there, whether we go ahead and put two new drives in. I, I'm hoping that's not the case. I'm hoping that there's a, something, a translator, like they said, that can make the 24 volt talk with the 12 volt systems. I don't have an answer for that because I, I haven't been able to get all the Teton Communications yet. But if, if they can help us get those to speak with each other and we get a new drive for the 30 and keep the existing drive for the 10 and make them talk, then we're talking maybe less than 20,000. Somewhere in that 13 to 20,000 range. I, I'm, I'm going to guess on whatever that's translator thing is.
We'll just keep working it up.
So yeah, that's,[1640.60] So yeah, that's, that's kind of up in the air.
But in the meantime, we need to deem some funds over there to take care of this.
So all of those things do have to have some work. I mean, I think that's why, part of the reason why he printed that, is so that you as a council are aware that there are things that need to be worked on.
And this is just like, some of it. It's not a full list, yeah.
And some of it's just maintenance. There's some of those that, the clay valve that is listed there, it's supposed to be rebuilt about every five years. I think that one was listed 15 years ago. And we know it doesn't work. We've proved that it doesn't work. So. So some of those things, I mean, is it important? Yes. Can, it can go a little further on the back burner compared to like the drives?
Well, we discussed it's gonna take a while to get all this stuff figured out, so.
I mean, we're covered. I don't wanna, I don't wanna, I mean, we're covered. Because right now, the 10 horse is, it's doing its job.
But it's also wearing out.
It is wearing out.
It has a noisy bearing.
Yeah, and it will have to probably be replaced sometime this year. And that's a smaller, that's, I think, what did he, he listed?
It's a cheaper motor.
$1,500, I think. A guy was talking to his nephew, and one of the pump places down at Blackfoot, and he thinks that I need to get with him. I gotta take pictures of it. He's gonna find out if he can actually rebuild that pump. Some of those smaller ones, it's cheaper to just buy new ones, but some of them can be rebuilt pretty easily. But we do have water. That 30 horse pump over here at the Booster House, it will run on its own. I mean, the drive isn't completely fried. It will, it will run, it'll run all summer well. I just have to manually turn it on. And then we're, we're back to where we were last year. So that, and that's the, I guess that's the thing. I can manually turn the 10 horsepower off and kick the 30 horse on.
But at night, it runs one, not necessary.
But basically, without having to run down there every time we have a water spike and turn one on, that's ridiculous. But we do have, the well three is right now our backup. So if the 10 horsepower fails for whatever reason, whether we turn on the fire hydrant or everybody flushed at the same time, the big well over at the well three will kick on and it will supply the town.
And we learned it takes about three minutes for it to kick on.
About three minutes. So. I do realize that your water pressure drops, and it drops just, just to within, I have to start making phone calls to the state. So we're gonna try and fix that too. But it does kick on, it does do what it's supposed to do, it will feed the city water. So we're not broke, we're just way behind on maintenance. Is that a better way to put it?
Well, you can give your maintenance report real quick, too.
And.
Just updates on what you've been.
So the first week in April, I had a great week. April 1st was my official first day on the job. April 2nd, I ran away to Boise for a week. And there was some great training. I got some hands-on experience on tearing the hydrants, or the fire hydrants apart, fixing them. It's something I never do. Something I don't think has been done in a long time. I don't think many of them have been run. But I have learned a lot about, there's a new thing coming up, and probably in the next month or so, you'll be seeing some little flyers or some door hangers. There's a, they call it the lead copper rule. We have to verify what's in the city and what's hooked to our city lines. And that's galvanized and copper lines. And they want us to eventually work with homeowners to get rid of all of their copper and galvanized that's hooked to the city line. We can't, we can't tell the homeowners to do anything inside their homes. The transmission line from our, from our light into the house, they're looking to, within the next couple of years, have it that all removed, so that there's no more there. So I learned that. Like I say, Tuesday, I met with Robert Cook from Idole Row Water. He says the system is running like it's supposed to. It has some hiccups, like we just talked about it, needs some maintenance. But it can, we can be taking care of it. If it can be as expensive or as cheap as we want it to be, we can continue to fiddle with it and go another year, or we can start putting some money on it. That's kind of how we're sitting there. This week, I, I was gonna bring you some pictures so you could see it, but my phone won't connect to the printer. So I'll do it old school way the next time. But I've been down at our lagoons. Had a lot of trees growing around there. I got most of them. The ones that I have to have hip waders, I didn't go out to get yet, because I need a better pair of hip waders. My fishing ones leak. I'm not going out there with leaky boots. I don't, well, I, I just don't wanna. But I did get most of the trees. That's three pickup loads of trees I haul off of our lagoons. And our lagoons, we are pumping back into our lagoons as of today.
We were pumping to Firth.
We have been, so just. Kind of let you know what we've been doing. We started on the 18th of last month, pumping to Firth. And we stopped today. And we're about an hour, an hour separate from when we started to when we shut it off. But 24 days. And we did some math earlier, and so this math will change, Rob, but. In 24 days, we pumped 681,988 gallons down to Firth. Okay, so just to give you a perspective of what that is, that's 28,416 gallons a day. And to break it down a little bit further, because you don't think, and you're like me, I, before I started doing this, I had, I turned the water on, it's there, I flush the toilet, it goes away, you never think about it. But that's 183 gallons a day per home, just so you know.
And that's including medical supremes?
Yeah. So that, it's kind of a, it's an average. So obviously, if there's only one person living in a home, it's probably different than.
That sounds like a lot, though.
Yeah, they figure 350.
Even the lawn has lots of them.
So the average is 350. What they consider equivalent to a unit, it's 350 gallons a day.
Well, how much water is pumped every day?
That pump, what did he tell us the other day? It's rated at, I wanna say.
When we were first looking.
3,600 gallons a minute, or something like that?
First time on a Saturday morning, it wasn't like 500 gallons-ish a minute, like in the morning.
Right.
That's how much water is being consumed now. That's just for Bay Sal.
Yeah.
If you can figure like out of falls or bigger cities. We were at the Firth facility down there, their sewer. And they were talking about some of these cities that go through millions of gallons, millions, like within hours. It's crazy, but it's pretty interesting to think about.
So yeah, we really don't know, we don't, until you're seeing it, you don't realize how much. And maybe that's not as much as some places are going through. Maybe we're below the average, but it blew my mind.
Well, it's been eye-opening for me to be on this side of it, like the bills and stuff.
So we're 200.
It's a different perspective.
$280 a month between the two pumps you're only covering for electric bill, so that's what it's costing.
So, yeah, everything's up and going. It's, we're doing good, I think. So we're gonna continue on. We're doing some more cleanup. I don't know, if you, down past the wellhouse right over here, I smoothed it out, got rid of all the garbage that was collecting against the fence for the last year. Part of that was, I've seen it, I know it's there, but my wife held it be hard about that one. She says you're working there now. Go take care of it. So, so I do that. So as you, as you drive around and you see some of the buildings and you see it cleaned up.
I need to clean out the office over here. I walked in there, it's like, oh.
There's still more that needs to be done, but.
There is, but you could tell a dent, for sure.
The wellhouses are all supposed to be swept and washed several times a year. We're getting on it. We'll get on a schedule to where they're clean and nice, so.
Okay. Yeah, you probably know, Brian, but just be careful when you get the trees out from the lagoons, if they have a clay liner.
We're not pulling them.
Yeah. We're, we're not pulling. Make sure, because we used to do that cinder tree, yes.
We were over there talking about that, but.
Don't, I, we're not.
Well, book lots of holes in the bottom, so.
It does make it less that we have to pump down the Firth, but.
So nine years from now, we'll fail the cinder tree, yes, and then we'll be in good a million dollars.
No, no, they're all being cut. And I had some.
Well, don't you want that?
You don't wanna.
I had some fantastic pictures. There's one on the very far side, that the, it's an elm tree, and it actually tipped over at some point. Or a guy didn't finish cutting it all away. And it's actually growing roots. So there's a branch out in the water, and I think, okay, I'm gonna cut it off right there and drag it in. No, it's growing roots.
It's like the, like the.
Clearing down in there. I mean, so if you've got this much roots, trying to go through all that sewage water down to get into dirt.
It's like hydroponics.
It is. So yeah, if you ever look at hydroponics, and you see that it's working in those trees. I was amazed. I kept pulling on that thing, going like, what is holding it? Like, it's, yeah, they're roots.
I guess trees are dead a lot.
They're pretty healthy.
So talking about trees, we're gonna do a cleanup this Saturday, City of Bay Sal with the church, so.
Before you, can I go back to the funds? Can we move any over to water? Like, can we get the VFD going, things like that?
If you're gonna move your money, I would. It's outside of your normal budget, so I think council should approve that.
And then we'll have to do like in the amended budget, the end, we'll do a public hearing.
So if you move water, if you move money over into water, and then we end up not spending as much as she moves? Can we move it back to the same?
Absolutely.
Same, same.
Yes, anything within the normal budget, the mayor would have discretion to do. This is outside of that, so the council will approve it.
And how much?
I don't.
It sounded like 20, took care of the, immediately.
Is that a good start?
That would be a good start.
Is that a motion, or more $20?
$20.
All in favor?
You don't think it's gonna cover?
So yeah, that's done. We're gonna meet 9 o'clock in the morning, and we're gonna run trailers around, and skidster and kinksaws, and just kind of clean up all the trees around that people put out, and take it to the burn pile.
Some, like kitty corner from your place, you've got trees in your yard.
Garbage is.
Do we get their trees that are.
I haven't heard from them. And if it's not on the side, then I would.
We're not gonna trim trees, we're not gonna drag it out of people's yards unless they're prepared to help out with that. But if it's in the city right away and it's piled there, we'll take it. I think that's about the work. Because we don't wanna be in people's yards.
So we don't know about how many people in front of.
We'll do what we can. We'll move them after, and whatever we need to. Okay. Kyle Jones.
That's me. I've been here a couple of times, but just wanted to just stop by and catch up with everybody, make sure that, you know, that Harper, our engineer, right, so he's here and available to help. We've got a couple of things. Obviously, water is one, Rob had mentioned, you guys are gonna discuss tonight. And then your guys' transportation plan. You've probably been, or told already that Altech awarded you guys for the transportation plan. So you've been going on that coming September, sorry, October 1st. I don't know if you'll be available. So it's all for you guys to keep in mind, as you're selecting engineer for that. So just wanna make sure, stop in and leave you an update of where we are and pray they help.
Great, thank you. Gil, proposal permits for soliciting.
All right. So you also have a copy of it. And basically, why, I wanna put this out here, is I'm sick and tired of these people coming around, getting hit two or three times in a day when they're hitting the, hitting the, hitting the city. And the attitude of them, once you tell them to go away, they, you know, get real uppity about it. And one way is to do this is to limit them coming in here and to get, have a revenue stream for the city when they do come in. So basically, anyone going door to door to solicit information, or sell product, or solicit to make an appointment to discuss, sell or provide information about a product, or to gather information from residents, or to solicit donations, funds, or other monies, must be issued a permit from the city clerk. Each person, each person must have a permit issued in their name and the name of the organization they're representing. And I have it on as permit fees. And one of the things I forgot to put in here, the permits are good for calendar month only. So they get a permit for the month of June, you get a permit for August, whatever, all right? For each individual, it's a $15 fee for the month. For the company, sponsoring individuals, the company also has to pay a fee of $25. Exceptions are like religious organizations, established emergency relief organizations such as American Red Cross, school groups, established nonprofits such as the Boy Scouts or the Girl Scouts. Fines. Anyone, anyone caught soliciting without a permit, it's a $500 per person, fine. Any organization bringing people in without a permit is a $1,500 fine for the organization. Persons without a permit who refuse to cease to desist when instructed to by any resident is a $1,000 in addition to the $500 fine of not having a permit. And this is basically to get people to stop harassing our citizens and provide, well, the companies that wanna do, wanna come in here anyways, for them to provide a revenue stream for the city.
So is that like a solar company coming around?
Or the, for the window, window and siding guys that come around every, every two, three months.
Well, she must have gotten hit a lot, eh?
As you said, I've never had them get my place.
Well, they probably get when you're not there. But yeah, I've.
That's the camera.
Yeah, they, they, they'll come around. I watch them go over to my daughter's place. She tells them, no, get out, get out of here. They'll come over to mine, I'll tell them, awesome, do you have a permit? Yeah, you do, let's see it. Oh, my manager has it. I said, no, you don't have one, because you haven't gotten one from the city. You need to leave, or I call the sheriff's department. And then they'll leave, when I threaten to call the sheriff's department on it. But sometimes they don't. Sometimes they did. Like, I'll leave, and I'll sit elsewhere in town, walking around, still going door to door. And, you know, it's one of those things, it's just, you know, I mean, it's totally root of them. You know, if, you know, they're not gonna, if they're not gonna first check the city, they need a permit, which currently we don't issue. But, you know, when they get told, hey, no, you need to leave, and they refuse to leave.
So here's my thoughts, is I, I don't want door to door salespeople, but I think it takes their ability away, to make money.
No, they'll take their ability away.
So.
It is not a permit, it's just.
We, but do we have like the real backing to really like?
That's what I was wondering, how do we force that?
It's largely, well, so, so Blackfoot has something very similar, no question about it. I mean, but if you, it's largely the same conversation we just had about your right of things. Obviously, number one, you have to be able to handle issuing permits. You know, and they can be free for now, until you get on your resolution, so we didn't have to have a public hearing for it. But the enforcement of it would be just as, you know, standard misdemeanor, like in the other violation of your city codes. You know, so there would be some enforcement techniques there through the sheriff's office, will be the enforcement of it. It's, like I said, it's largely the same conversation we had with your right of way. I mean, if you're gonna require a permit, well, that takes manpower and everyone.
So the question is, how do you feel about it?
How do I feel about it?
Listeners.
Oh, I hate them, but I am nice to them. And then I just say, you know, I'm not interested, and I've never had one come back that I asked to leave.
How do you feel about it? Don't know.
I think I'm like anybody else, I find quite annoying.
You know how they answer at the door?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's.
No, I've walked away from them before, because I'm like, I am working, just because you see me at my house, I'm working, I'm going back to work.
But you can simply put an lawsuit in that door also.
That's what I feel.
And the other thing I was gonna add, so I went over here about three years ago, changed their trespassing statute. When it's a home, it's automatically trespass, if they're not wanted, so they do have to immediately leave and tell them to off. So there is a trespassing law in place that is there.
Well, my daughter-in-law, they live in Shelley, and they just have a little, right by their doorbell, no soliciting.
I have one too, and some of them don't pay attention, and some do. I've seen some walk away when they see it. And I think it's gonna be the same thing about next, I don't know.
Well, and I just feel like, too, you can have all these laws, but to enforce them.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, we gotta have, I mean, we're a little town.
This would be, this would be a sheriff call, just like a trespasser would be called. Why don't we think about.
So the trespass law already covers this, basically.
Well, if anybody comes on your property, and you don't leave, and they don't immediately leave, that's trespass. And it's actually automatically trespass if you have a fence or it's a, you know, yard. They changed the law, which is just kind of strange, the way they did it, but if somebody comes on your property, it's trespass if they're not wanted there. So I mean, it's a call to the sheriff to get them off.
Well, the trespass, call the sheriff, they, being a misdemeanor, they can be, go to jail time, and then they're. Well, the trespass call to the sheriff, they're being a misdemeanor. They can be go to jail time and then they're hurt in jail. They can come back at us. However, if it's just fines only like this is, they don't jail time.
You're not gonna do a civil penalty. You're gonna do a civil penalty. You're gonna want it to be a misdemeanor.
Yeah, but I mean, but the misdemeanor doesn't have to have jail time included on as an option.
No, no, you can, yeah.
That's why I say you do, you do. So it's fines only.
Right. If you're gonna do a misdemeanor, you're gonna want jail time on it. I mean, it's the risk of the medical bills, but like I say, that's you want that thumb. I mean, if you're gonna make it, if you're gonna take the time to make it an ordinance, you want it enforced on. So either the standard misdemeanor always has, you have to go over in jail.
I guess we're just gonna have to figure this one out.
Right.
Just think about it. I'm not sure.
Yeah, like I said, this is the only way possible for generating.
And maybe another thing that you could do is how many other people in the community would support it?
I think, I think.
Maybe you could put together some signatures. I don't know. Then we know. Is it?
Yeah.
Everybody that wants it?
I would I would think that if half the people in the city wanted it, then that would be okay. But if two or three people only, I don't think that would be something. I think that's like, maybe some people like that, then they want that.
Yeah.
Okay, well.
Sometimes that's all the dog is to people.
I know, dog. Last time the window guy came over to my house, I invited him for corn. We had some corn and talked and he didn't sell me. Well, no, I bought a bottle because I'm like, you know what? You're a good dude.
And I thought, oh, and I was like, why did you tie that down here? It doesn't work.
He's out there in the working and trumping and the heat of the sun.
Like cleaning the tires and, you know, putting like a little hole in your dirty window. I left that court hole for a long time.
And we had one show up. We, you know, to work out of a remote area, this one way, walk all the way down the road to the edge, a lot of it ahead, and he came up. He looks with agony, you know, not even degrading stuff. But he sat there and told probably the worst racist jokes you've ever heard. And it was, you know, it was an African American kid from down south. But I mean, he just went on and we're all kind of uncomfortable because it's like, do you laugh? Do you not? Do you, you know, I mean, it was just some of the worst worst things you've ever heard.
You know what? I kind of respect those guys because they are out, you know, doing something. Really, think about it. How many people just do nothing? So they're out trying to make a living. So I'm kinda okay with it and I'm easy with people anyway, so.
And maybe that's our self-employed.
Yeah.
Bring.
Give them a drink, chit chat with them. They're they're trying just like we all try. So.
I too have bought the cleaner. Yes, and did on some of this stuff on. He was, I had actually just washed my windows. I was out there washing when he came. And he was like, oh, you've done a good job, but your car tires are dirty. And I was like, and he cleaned them. So I was like, and I too was like, man, he really did this big ol'. And I think it was that guy. And I was like, man, I really feel bad, but that's a good idea. Shut it up.
But they are all weird.
It smells better than wood next to it. Cause he hit our place too.
And then look at, yeah, yeah. What he ate, I pulled it out and then looked and I was like, ooh. It's like, I gotta wipe now.
I do have a funny one to tell you though. So when I was a kid, just about back in the seventies when diesel was like fifteen cents a gallon for barbeesele. Anyway, a guy had come through and my mom, it was a weed killer. And his stuff was great. It killed all these weeds. And she paid like four hundred dollars for these fifty gallons of this weed killer from diesel.
I guess I've never seen this window guy before.
I didn't hear that. I'm like, oh, I remember.
You'd be surprised how people come in my foyer thinking they can just come on in. I'm like, from my house, what you doing?
Okay, I think that concludes. But is there anything else? There's no trees here.
Yes. I might like to ask the council, I remember they were going to put the the delp of the water. How much rights?
One more time.
Are, do you wave that from them?
Yes.
Are you waving that from them?
Kinda late. Yes. I'm hearing Carlos Tyler represent. I'm getting Carlos Tyler represent. This water line project, we got to come up with that.
Waterline project that we got to come out of.
Whatever you sent in the mail.
Oh, all the water maintenance.
Yes.
Oh.
Well, are they doing any, what all are we doing for the entire road?
No, the water maintenance is, we're having like this, everything is just happy to.
Supply issues.
Supply. So no, no, they need. Upgrading and fixing our waters.
I agree. Your meters have our waters. Your meter housings, all your meter.
Meter housing is like for your water. The only thing we were gonna talk about is if you were gonna.
The only thing we were gonna.
They redid the sewer line.
They redid my sewer line and talked with the.
Larry and talked with whoever else.
Larry.
We wanted to, on the other side of the road, we didn't count it.
On the other side of the road, you know, you had our.
Sewer.
And but.
We get our water.
Sewer.
So we wanted to tie in.
So we wanted to tie in.
Into the main line to the, because those three homes. Now you can do three homes.
At my house and then you can do a manhole at my house. And they said we couldn't do that because, but they said we can't do that because.
Talking about the sewer?
The sewer.
So.
That's what, that's what we wanted to do. If you're gonna be digging up.
Main line while you're gonna dig up. Main line while you're gonna dig up.
So that sewer line is just, it's just those three lines and then it drops into the.
And a back bug there.
Well, let me tell you the story from back forty years. Let me tell you the story from back forty years.
When those three houses were built, when those three houses.
Had some kind of arrangement.
Redcoor had some kind of arrangement. And so there was a.
And so a line put between the three houses, there was a line connected into three houses.
And connected.
Sewer to go.
Well, they anticipated they were gonna build more houses, so there's.
They anticipated they were gonna build more houses, so there were more volumes coming through that.
So on two of those houses had problems with.
So if two of those houses had problems with sewage back up and they put.
Does it back up into the house?
Yeah.
So where's the where's the.
Does it back up into the house?
Yeah. Well, in the next right Kurt's house, when you connect, when you redid the line toward the furth. When you redid the line, the furth, it it was connecting uh, right there. It was connected. And so the and so when that when that main trunk line, when that when that main trunk line, the furth went in. Just, you know, talk to the owners that connected the line correctly and that was connected and lined correctly into that.
But it's gonna continue until, you know.
But it's gonna continue until.
But they have to do it themselves. Of course, they got to tear up the highway.
They have to do it themselves. Of course, they got to tear up the highway.
But they could be saving money right now, saving.
They could be saving money for some eventuality. Aside some for some eventuality, you know, with some.
City had some interest in.
You know, we're doing that. City had some interest in.
When it gets, if it backs up, it's clogged. When it gets, if it backs up, it's clogged. By the two on the end, one in the middle, one in the end, they melt.
Two on the end, one in the middle, one in the end, they smell flood.
So it's back in it because there's not enough flow going through there.
So it's back in it because there's not enough flow going through there.
One more water down there.
It doesn't work that way.
It doesn't work that way with flood.
How often does that plug up?
The rider.
Well.
The middle house, they never finished their basement.
The the middle house, they never finished their basement.
No, they didn't finish it and then backed up. They got to finish it twice.
They got to finish it back twice.
So we went in, we put it clean out.
So we went in, we put it clean out and get the jetter in there and get.
So we can get the jetter in there and get. We're just wondering, there's another water line.
We're just wondering.
Project.
There's another water on. They're starting to tie in the water roads. So we're up directly into.
But they wouldn't do it because you're counting.
They wouldn't do it.
But they wouldn't.
Pay the scene. Sewer water.
That's a crazy thing.
Yeah. And that, and that was one of the issues I had.
And that might be one of the issues I had last year. I got, I got, I feel like.
Cause they replaced all of the new lines that.
The new lines that.
My address. My address.
Why don't you just kind of, actually, they're gonna do this road. Because it's actually, I take from what I understand from up there, so it's.
And that's what, that's what, wouldn't they redo this road? That's what, that's what, wouldn't they redo this windmill or there's anything like that? The windmill, like there's.
So are, is there legal issues with them? In the county, are there legal issues?
With them in the county, can we?
So if we can, if they tear that road up, there's not a legal issue?
So how are you seeing that we to like?
Not a legal issue.
But how are you seeing that we to like, to tear it up and before they fix it? I don't know if they would.
You're gonna wanna do it along some of the projects.
Yeah.
They're gonna do the road, that would be the time.
But that's why we.
Right, but how is it you tear up the road so that when they tear it, they'll tear up the road so that when they.
We want to.
That's where we need our, your tolerance.
That's where we got. What I think we're going after.
What are they redoing it?
And he's waiting to hear.
Yeah. I've been hiring them.
Especially. Well, yeah, yeah. Like, it would figure it. My kids. So they wait to hear if that's. So if he's waiting for it, maybe that's. They're waiting to hear. If he's starting to be. Disagreeing with you.
I think, I think you just need to understand what the sewer. I think, I think.
I'll, I'll start looking at my plan. I, obviously, I, do I do it nice? Obviously, I do it nice. I will look at it? I. I have no problems whatsoever. I have no problem.
Directly on that one.
Looking you all up. Cause that's basically a sub one. Cause that's basically a sub one. And then it dumps in the.
Right.
Is that? And then it dumps in the.
Three homes go after it. They go down. The three men go after it. A hard way down. And then a man go.
So where does, I don't know what's supreme. So where does their, so cause their.
That's where is there.
Cause their.
That's exactly.
Right at the top of the hill.
So does it, does it go in the back? So does it, does it go? It goes into the, basically our sewer. And it goes into the, basically our sewer. To the side and you guys are.
It comes in very like kitty, like kind of like.
There's a flood that's not mainly.
The the middle house.
Middle house, so if.
The the middle house.
Middle house, so it's part of the portage that man. So it's probably a part of the pipe there, but it's not coming out of that line. It's probably at first.
Something like a county issue.
They can be nearer to the city.
So what you're saying is you're in that void. So you're, what you're saying is you're.
I also vote, I also vote for it.
So we can make you mad.
Well, we.
We can make you mad.
So how hard is it to? How hard is it to edit? I mean.
I know Morton doesn't want that.
If they're already paying water sewer, if they're already paying garbage.
Yeah.
Cause I just came in. In garbage.
Yeah.
Cause I just came in.
Yeah. Yeah.
You're getting the city.
I'm the same as them. I have a front address. I'm the same as them. I have a front address or in the city, but I'm in the county.
The county or city, girl. And that's another gray area because that's another gray area.
Yeah, technically, one side of it is baseball. Yeah, technically, one side of the road, county. The other side of the road, I think. The road, I think.
Do you have the city part of Roseville that's why it's the same?
I guess, speculating, it could be that, because when they wanted to cut in, that it was the city road, the municipality didn't want the road, the county didn't want to pay for it.
So that's.
That's why they come this way.
I was gonna say, Guy was telling me that this, Guy was telling me that this. Go to the city limit and Oregon road. City limit from city limit is it's the same thing. It's a county road. It's a. That's city main. County road that's city main.
And do it in county. On Gojin and on Oregon.
So the other thing I have for you. Our street sign by our house, our our address is on the front of our house. Our address is six forty-two, like on the corner. Um, Kevin, we're sending a six forty-seven, I think, to us. It's forty-eight or forty or something. Have buses, our sign. Yeah, which is beyond, beyond the other side of the sign line. And the road sign says six fifty. And so guess who gets all the packages? Guess who gets all the packages? I'm gonna apply UPS and like, hey, I'm gonna drive UPS. Cause I have to do money for them. And I have to do money for them. And then we also get Supreme trucks that stop at our house because if you put in the maps, we're Supreme, but it brings you back to the house. So I'm like, everybody wants to go to my house. Figure out why.
If they're using Google Maps, you gotta go.
Oh, really?
If they're using Google Maps.
So yeah, so somewhere where they. So yeah, so somewhere where they.
They used to have, have my house four blocks.
They used to have, have my house four blocks.
I think almost, I used to use like six forty-five.
Let Brian just kind of figure out what they were. It's not Brian, but it's.
And I will rock into that. But I have no problems. That doesn't sound like ours.
But I have no problems. That doesn't sound like ours. It's a sample.
How to do it?
They do it for the.
Well, but they are gonna be trying to develop. Well, they are gonna be trying to develop.
The county would have real fit about it. The county would have real fit about it. That's why.
When they redo it, they store up that road. When they redo this, that road.
Because it's not just the wind. Because it's not just. And that's, that's the one that they're gonna wind the road.
That's the, that's the one that.
It's not the windmills. It's, it's the line. It's not the windmills. It's the way there's line.
I thought the mine was supposed to be use Wolverine road. I thought the mine was supposed to be use Wolverine.
Well, we'll see.
I think we're all about, we'll see. Hey, I think we're all about. Rosen to a.
Joe yet. Joe yet.
Anything else to be right?
I mean, you're just the mayor of God's box. I just got, I'll speculate. Somebody else. I'll figure.